All right, folks. So I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ari, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes. Okay, Abbott, Loop, do I have Lizzie? Okay, not yet. Airport Heights, Emily?
Yep, I'm here.
Thank you. Oh, sorry. Sorry, friends, I just wanna make sure you guys can hear. Okay. Uh, Basher, I think I saw Dirk.
Here.
You. Uh, Bayshore Platt, Bob Lau. Uh, Bear Valley, Caitlin Jackson.
I'm here.
You. Um, I'm just gonna go back. Bob Lau, thank you. Oh, sorry. Uh, Birchwood, Debbie Ossander. Okay. Uh, Campbell Park, Kevin Feiman.
I'm here.
Thank you. Chupiak, Daryl Parks.
I'm here.
Thank you. Downtown Sylvia Villan Meadix, sorry.
I'm here, thank you.
Thank you. Eagle River Cliff Cook.
I'm here.
Thank you. Eagle River Valley, I think Joy, who is the delegate today?
Uh, Joy Webb is here.
Thank you. Uh, Fairview, I think Kelly is here as the delegate.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, Girdwood, I don't have an answer from GBOS. Uh, Glen Alps, Greg, are you here? Sorry, still letting people in. Nope, okay. Uh, Government Hill, Bob French, I believe you told me he was not really here, but just in case, okay. Uh, Hillside, Sandy Bloomfield, you've stepped in as the new delegate? Online. Okay, I'm here, I'm seeing a nod. Everybody's seeing a nod, yeah?
Yeah.
Uh, Huffman O'Malley, Jason Norris.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Midtown, Chris Stoner.
Here.
Thank you, welcome in person. Uh, uh, Mountain View Charlie.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, North Star Jade Powell. I saw that one. Thank you. Uh, Northeast Pamela. Thank you. Uh, Old Stewart Ocean View, did we get a Gary? Not yet, okay, I'll let us know if he shows up. Uh, we don't have anyone, Portage, Rabbit Creek, John Riley?
Yeah, I'm here, uh, and Tim Alderson, uh, the Chair of our CC is also on.
Thank you. Uh, who's the voting delegate? Will it be you, uh, John?
Yeah.
Thank you. Uh, Rogers Park, Mar- I don't think Marilyn could come. Is there anybody from Rogers Park? Nope, okay. Uh, Russian Jack Kathleen.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Sand Lake Carrie.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Scenic foothills Roger.
Here.
Thank you. South Edition John.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, South Fork, uh, Stephen, did I see you?
Yes, you did, I'm here.
Thank you, welcome. Online, uh, Spinard Sarah.
Here.
Thank you. Uh, Taku Campbell, uh, did we have anybody from Taku Campbell? Okay, Mike, they might come. Uh, Turnigan Kathy?
Yes, here.
Thank you. Turnigan Arm, I think I saw Michael.
I'm here.
Thank you. And University Area Stephen?
That's me, here.
Thank you, and I did see, uh, Lizzie from Abbott, Loop, join.
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you. Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. We have four. Okay, we have four. Um, for the record, um, could you please check that second page for anybody who might have missed, whose mic is off, with the thing running in, because I see there's page two. Oh, yeah. Of the Zoom call. Um, I don't see anybody that we missed. I will keep an eye and try to announce if we, um, get any.
Ariana.
Oh, yep.
It's Sarah from Taku Campbell. I was trying to join and it kept saying the meeting host, waiting on the meeting host.
Sorry about that, I was multitasking. Okay, so we have Sarah Alexander from Taku Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, we have four, thank you so much. Um, next, I will, um, entertain a motion for an election of a temporary Presiding Officer. Are there any nominations?
For?
Can you repeat that, please? Um, I will entertain a motion, uh, for an election of a temporary Presiding Officer, and I can explain the why as soon as I have a motion.
Nominate Sarah Presley.
Second. I, okay, I'm actually currently the Presiding Officer, so we need to be a temporary Presiding Officer because I'm the Chair of the Committee. And I guess for the purposes of clarification, I'm also on the Bylaws Committee, so need to be available for Q and A as part of our discussion, and so can.
So we need someone else besides you?
Correct.
Nominate Charlie.
I have a nomination for Charlie Welch. Is there a second?
I understand.
Seconded by Pamela. Any discussion? Shall we vote? Shall we vote? Ballot? Uh, we can do by consent? Yes, we can do by consent, thank you. So, any objections to having Charlie chair the remainder of the meeting?
I object, I don't know which council he's in.
Um, Mountain View.
Oh.
Okay. Are there, are there any objections to electing Charlie as the temporary Presiding Officer for the remainder of this meeting? Hearing none. Charlie, I will symbolically pass you the scabbol.
Yeah.
It's not required, but. Lord, the room is yours.
Okay. And.
Chair, I have a question. Since you recused yourself partially because you're one of the members of the Bylaws Committee, do other members of the Bylaws Committee need to recuse themselves?
She.
Just as Chair votes.
Just to repeat that, she asked why, uh, if Sarah recused herself, uh, because she's a member of the Bylaw or Committee, uh, what do other members need to recuse themselves? I can respond to that. Um, no, it's just not really appropriate for me to chair if we're fielding question and answer. Um, if someone asks a question, but it's out of order, for example, is it out of order because I didn't want to answer the question, or is it out of order because Robert's rules said so? Okay. So, that's the why.
Just point, point of clarification, you're not recusing yourself.
Correct, I am.
You're just passing the scabbol, so there is a distinction, right?
Yes, thank you. Um, as a hint, um, oh wait, no, I can, I can move to approve the agenda, because I'm not the Chair. I move to approve the agenda.
Second. Any objections?
I am having an extremely difficult time hearing people, and I came to the meeting on purpose to be in this room to hear, and I would appreciate if everyone would speak up.
Thank you.
Were there any objections to approving the agenda?
Uh, we have a question online.
Okay.
Yeah, um, this is, uh, Cliff Cook from Eagle River Community Council. Um, I sent an email a couple days ago. I just wanna make sure that, uh, that is in receipt, and the reason why I'm bringing that up now is I don't know if that needs to be put on the agenda prior to us discussing the bylaws, because it, uh, concerns the need for the Articles of Incorporation to be updated prior to the bylaws. And I don't wanna waste people's time here if the bylaws are not gonna be discussed tonight, because the Articles of Incorporation need to be discussed first and updated for the, uh, Alaska statute.
Can I repeat your response to that?
Uh, please.
Okay.
I just don't know if that needs to be part of the agenda again, prior to the, uh, discussion of the bylaws, because the, uh, Articles of Incorporation per the statute need to be updated prior to the bylaws.
Sure, so, um, we're not gonna vote on the bylaws tonight, but we can have a conversation about the bylaws. Um, and then, before we vote on the bylaws, we can have an answer to, do we vote on the bylaws first, or do we need to update the Articles of Incorporation? They might have to go hand in hand, like, as the bylaws are ratified, but we can have a conversation about what should be in the draft bylaws of the meeting.
Okay, that, that sounds fair.
And so we will take.
Yeah, that sounds fair, but the Alaska statute specifically says that the, uh, uh, Articles have to be changed first prior to the bylaws.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, we will add that to the interview, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure it's done right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Discussion? Agenda's been approved?
If you say so. Do you do by consent?
I asked him, was, was there any objections to the agenda being approved?
Got her. And then somebody said something, any further objection?
Okay, any further objections? I guess the agenda's approved. Let's go to the work sessions discussing the draft bylaws.
I don't understand.
And then we're gonna introduce you.
Do we wanna.
Motion into.
Are we motioning into work session first?
I would suggest that.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move, we move into a work session?
Second. Any objections?
Sarah, do you wanna explain?
Or explain, I don't know, just.
Yeah.
You're doing great.
Oh, yes, do you wanna, now that it's been seconded, maybe Sarah can explain what the work session is. So, the idea behind the work session is that we can have more of a conversation or discussion without making sure that it is formal Robert's rules. So we've got some group agreements on here, um, and we have Laurie Wilk from the Four Eater Group, who can help facilitate this conversation as a third party, um, who can help us figure out what it is about the bylaws we wanna discuss, like where, where are the pickups, what are our questions? Um, and so she's, she can guide the conversation and be the leader of that conversation to facilitate, uh, if we're not in a formal meeting, but if we're in a work session. So that's the idea of kind of work session.
And also in a work session, you make no decisions, so there will be no decisions in this section of the meeting.
Oh, cannot emphasize that more times, right? Notice, we're making, we're taking no votes tonight.
Well, we heard.
You've done all your votes. No more votes, well, you'll vote to adjourn.
Not a problem, not a problem.
Take no votes about the, we're taking no votes about the bylaws tonight. We are gonna follow this set of group agreements. I'd like to review that with everyone so that we're clear. I will be relying on, I have a list of delegates in front of me that was just provided, and I will be leaning, I'm not an expert in your room, I'm just holding the space for this conversation as a neutral party, so, um.
I have a quick, uh, order. Why is Mike Edgerton at the table when, why is Mike Edgerton at the table?
So I can respond to that. He's a member of the Bylaw Committee?
But he was removed.
Not from the Bylaw Committee.
But right now, he, so why is he at the table? How is he at the table as a delegate?
He is not. He, during roll call, he was not called in as a delegate. He's here as a member of the Bylaw Committee. Pardon?
Delegates need to be on the Bylaw Committee?
No, and, and members of the Committee do not need to be delegates.
I'm sorry?
Members of the Committee do not need to be delegates, that is not a requirement.
So why is he at the table?
Because he is a member of the Bylaw Committee.
Okay, I have a question, this is Sylvia. Laurie, thank you for being here today. I really appreciate the work that you do, you know, I've known you for so many years, thank you, and Laurie will guide us the right way. But, um, I have a question. So now we have, and this is confusing, I'm sorry, but it's very confusing to me. We have a bylaws committee that are made out of people that are not delegates, which, to me, the bylaws is the book for the delegates and the FCC to follow. So how did we incorporate non-members to be part of the bylaws committee? That's a question that I would like answered, please. Thank you.
Do we?
Do you wanna answer that?
I can answer that, but can we put a pin in that question and come back to it right after the group agreements, because we actually haven't gotten to the group agreements?
Didn't we get very far?
It's true, it's true. But I, I've, I'm pinning your questions, Sylvia.
But I think there was a question from Kevin.
I just didn't fully hear the introduction of our, our third party.
Thank you.
What entity that she represents, and if there's any conflict between the groups.
Question online, awesome, I appreciate it.
So, um, let me introduce myself.
Please.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm, my name's Laurie Wilk, I'm the President and CEO of the Four Eater Group. Four Eater is a nonprofit that serves nonprofits and travel governments across the state of Alaska.
Uh, and, uh, I was asked to be in this conversation simply to hold space and facilitate this conversation. I have no opinion about the outcome of the result. I am being paid to be here as a facilitator.
And no, uh, relationship with the Assembly?
Nope.
Okay. And we have another question?
Oh, my, uh, do we have a question online? I think Cliff?
No, it was answered, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I have been in this room before, some of you might know, you remember me. I provided a training for, um, roles and responsibilities of the nonprofit, and we made a distinction in those conversations between the role of a nonprofit and the role of the Community Council. That was enlightening for many people in the room, because they are not the same thing. They are pulled to different rules, different process, and, um, there has been some conflation in those conversations in the past. So I have been in this room before, both physically and online, and my colleague Heather Harris has also been in your room before facilitating some strategic planning. So, Four Eater has been with you before, uh, and it's my pleasure to be here now, so, um, my only role here is to try to help you get through this agenda as best as we can, uh, and the reason, again, we're also in a work session is because I don't, um, otherwise I couldn't really have a voice in this room, and I don't have a voice in terms of an opinion, but only to hold the space. I'm letting your people have all the say, I do have a list of people who, in the group agreements, the people who are, I am allowed to call on, and those would be the people that, um, are the formal delegates, so just to.
Yes, a little bit more, thank you.
I have a question online, who are you? Are you a delegate?
Who are you?
No, I am not a delegate, I am just a facilitator. That's it. Why do we have a facilitator here? Actually, we are grownups, we talk to each other on a regular basis, we get together as small teams and figure things out. Some of us spend forty to sixty hours a week in our Community Council. I, I think that we could probably work together rather than having a facilitator. I don't think it's needed.
I can hear.
With the last meeting that we had, it was a complete cluster, and I think that they just wanted to try to have an impartial third party, just to go, okay, timeout, let's go on to the next part. Instead of having it being steamrolled. I think that was the intention.
And who decided that?
It was the Executive Board. Yep. We felt it to be a good idea, because many members of the Executive Board are also on the Bylaws Committee, so we couldn't.
Which is also a conflict of interest.
No, members of the Executive Board are on the Bylaw.
There, there weren't a whole lot of volunteers to work on the Bylaw Committee?
Well, we can talk about proper noticing. Facebook, Facebook post is not proper noticing when you have correct emails and home numbers to contact. Notice what you've got online. Of the, of the bylaws, that's the main participation.
Well, it was formed at a meeting, and FCC delegate being correct. I forgot what month it was.
It was March, armed.
Yeah, well, but if working with people who are not delegates can be on the, on the subcommittee, and it should have been noted.
Now, are you, are you one of the delegates?
She is an alternate.
Okay, an alternate, an alternate is not who is addressing things here. We're talking with the delegates at the moment, okay?
If we have a work session?
You can, you can speak through your delegate now.
Yeah, if we have a work session and this is not a proper meeting, then I can speak.
You can speak through your delegate now. Thank you.
Chair, could I request that we get through this, uh, group agreement and that we not deviate any further, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. So the group agreements that were set by the organization to get through this meeting are as follows. Roll call will establish which delegates are voting members, one per council. That was already completed. That list is in front of me and in front of your Chair. Excuse me, is that one delegate?
Hmm.
That is, let me finish. One person that can vote, or if we bring someone else from our council, they should be able to speak. I don't know anything in the bylaws that says that they cannot speak, they can't vote, but they can speak.
For this, because it's the FCC stuff, and we're dealing with the delegates, we're asking that it be spoken through the delegate. If they want to speak, they can go through the delegate.
There's a question online.
I think we have, I think we have some pretty independent-minded people here, that they should have the right to speak if they want to speak. I, I'm, the FCC is not anything really special in my world. I belong to other nonprofits, and we function really well when people come in and need to talk or want to talk.
Chris, we had, at the last meeting, you know that it was, it was taken over and steamrolled by.
But we're not at a meeting now.
I understand, but we're just trying to make sure that it doesn't happen again, that's all.
Well, then you're.
That's why we're asking, that's why we're asking us to use through the FCC delegates.
You have a question online?
Yes.
I'm going to need it. Cliff, did you have a comment? Oh, there he is.
I do, just, just a comment, now, we're not getting anywhere. Um, I'd make a recommendation that we revert, revert back to Robert's rules. If we're gonna have a facilitator, let's go ahead and do it all the way, and, uh, by, by the Robert's rules, please. Just a recommendation.
I can't even get through that.
Was that a motion?
If you get out of a session.
Yes, yes, that was a motion.
Second. Second. Um, any discussion?
I do, I thought we were going to come here and be congenial. I, I thought that was the point, and the point is to not spend another two hours doing nothing but arguing. So I would really like us to just continue on with what we're trying to do here. Well, I personally appreciate Robert's rules. I find that there are some who use it as a hammer instead of as a method in order to move things forward. So, if it aren't possible, we can hold up and not pass this right now. If it, if it goes downhill, we're unable to collegially discuss this as delegates of the FCC, then by all means, I would not only support it, I would put it on the table. But for right now, could we get through what we're trying to in the beginning, because you are making the very point of why we are all here between two meetings, is to accomplish what we should have accomplished in a discussion and a not. So I would vote against this.
I am in agreement with Pamela. We're trying to get through the group agreements, which will serve as our sort of, uh, substitute for Robert's rules, but if we agree to the group agreements, that is what will.
Standing rules.
That's, those will be our standing rules for the rest of the meeting until we adjourn. So I would also vote no.
Jason?
Yeah, Chair, I don't intend to support this, um, quite frankly, and I don't impugn by those, it's a delegate matter, and so I, I act as raising patience, but it, this seems dilatory to me. It seems like th- this process and raising and making motions and everything else is denying us the ability, quite frankly, our rights and order to discuss this. And we all came here, the, the general feeling of this room, at almost every meeting, is one of collaboration, respect for disagreement, and good favor discussion. And I feel that's really being lost right now, and so I don't intend to support, and I encourage others to support, thank you.
We ask for the vote. Call the question. Second.
Called the question.
So, we have to vote, we have to vote on that?
Yep.
Two-thirds majority. Doesn't have to be a roll call though?
Uh, no, doesn't. It just has to be two, real clear, it's, uh.
Okay.
Uh, can I repeat it loud?
Please.
Okay, so there is a motion on the table, but before we do that, we are, uh, we're asking the previous question, which requires a two-thirds majority of all people, and if that passes, then we would immediately vote on the motion, and if it fails, then debate could continue. Sorry.
So.
Uh, you wanna do by consent? Or do you wanna do roll call? Let's do roll call. Yep, totally, okay, uh.
Oh, wait, wait, could you please repeat the question?
Oh, uh, you want me to repeat? Okay, so we are voting.
What we're voting on?
We are voting on the previous question, which is to end debate on the motion and move forward on voting on the motion.
Repeat the motion, please?
Uh, the motion is to go back to Robert's rules. And out of a work session, thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, uh, the previous question is not debatable, s- I'm sorry, Daryl.
Sorry, I got, I got bumped off of Zoom, so I missed about the last two minutes, so I'm not sure what. I did hear you say, state the question or the motion, but my apologies.
Okay. Uh, Abbott Loop, Lizzie?
Uh, yes.
Airport Heights Emily?
Yeah.
Uh, Basher Dirk?
Yes.
Uh, Bayshore Platt Bob?
Yep.
Bear Valley Caitlin?
Yes.
Campbell Park Kevin?
Yes.
Uh, Chupiak Daryl?
Yes.
Downtown Sylvia?
Yes.
Uh, Eagle River Cliff?
Yes.
Uh, Eagle River Valley Joy?
Yes.
Uh, Fairview Kelly?
Yes.
Uh, no one from there, um, sorry, sorry, uh, no one from there.
Uh, Hillside Sandy? Hillside Sandy, can I get a, can I get a, an audio from you? Are you able to give audio responses?
Uh, she gave a thumbs up.
Okay, y'all saw the thumbs up?
It was a thumbs up.
Thank you. Huffman O'Malley Jason?
Yes.
Uh, Midtown Chris?
Yes.
Mountain View Charlie?
Upstate.
North Star Jade, who is now on the row?
Yes.
Northeast Pamela?
Yes.
Uh, uh, Rabbit Creek John?
Yes.
Russia, uh, sorry, Rogers Park. Russian Jack Kathleen?
Yes.
Sand Lake Carrie?
Yes.
Scenic foothills Roger?
Yes.
South Edition John?
Yes.
South Fork Stephen? South Fork Stephen? Okay. Uh, Spinard Sarah?
Yes.
Taku Campbell Sarah?
Yes.
Uh, Turnigan Kathy?
Yes.
Uh, Turnigan Arm Michael?
Yes.
University Area Stephen?
No.
Okay, so, uh, all guesses, one abstained, one passed, it's.
Passed, so.
So now?
No, we're. They passed. Now we are voting on the motion. We have ended debate, and we are voting on the motion, and, uh, who made, somebody made the motion. Cliff, did you make the motion? Would you mind repeating it?
Yes, uh, I made the motion to, uh, uh, continue, revert back to Robert's rules, uh, since we are, uh, going to have a facilitator, uh, to revert back to Robert's rules.
Understood. There is no further debate. Uh, roll call?
Yes.
What else, wasn't it to end the work session? Yeah, end the work session. Does, does that work for you, Cliff? End the work session and revert back to Robert's rules?
Yes.
Thank you.
So point of clarification, a yes vote would end the work session and revert to Robert's rules, and no vote would keep us in work session.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Did everybody hear that?
I'm gonna need to repeat it.
Okay, a yes vote. Okay, a yes vote would end the work session and we would go back to Robert's rules. A no vote would continue on the work session. Okay, Abbott Loop Lizzie.
Uh, yes.
Airport Heights Emily.
No.
Basher Dirk.
No.
Uh, Bay Shore Clat Bob.
No.
Fair Valley Caitlin.
No.
Uh, Campbell Park Kevin.
No.
Chupiak Daryl.
Yes.
Uh, Downtown Sylvia.
I'm gonna say no.
Was that a no or an abstain? I'm sorry.
That's a no.
No, thank you. Uh, Eagle River Cliff.
Yes.
Eagle River Joy.
Yes.
Fairview Kelly.
No.
Uh. Hillside Sandy.
Yes.
Thank you. Hill, uh, Hugman O'Malley Jason.
No.
Midtown Chris.
I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain, thank you. Uh, Mountain View Charlie.
Abstain.
Uh, North Star Jade.
No.
Northeast Pamela.
No.
Uh, do, do, uh, Rabbit Creek John.
No.
Uh, Russian Jack Kathleen.
No.
Uh, Sand Lake Carrie.
Yes.
Scenic Foothills Roger.
No.
Uh, South Edition John.
No.
South Fork Steven, did you make it back?
Yes. And yes.
Yes and yes, thank you. Uh, Spinard Sarah.
No.
Taku Sarah.
No.
Turnigan Kathy.
No.
Turnigan Arm Michael.
No.
University Area Steven.
No.
Let me just.
Nineteen out of twenty-eight were no. It fails. So we will continue in the work session.
Yep.
So where were we? We were going to the group agreement. Am I correct?
We were going to the group agreements.
So we're to go back to the group agreement.
Okay, okay. Let's go back to the group agreements. The group agreements were established to create some structure for this conversation. Again, I'll remind you that the point of this conversation is purely to hear feedback that the committee can take under advisement as it continues its work. There will be no decisions or motions of any kind about the bylaws this evening. So all we're doing in this moment is getting feedback. I have a list of topics that we'll pull, that we'll use. And as we pull out those topics, which are big picture topics around the bylaws, we will ask, we will invite one person per, uh, one, one delegate, uh, to participate. And I have a list of those people. And they will, everyone will be given one minute and I'll have my phone looking at time. And we'll go around and we'll give everybody their minute. And then if, and then we'll move to the next topic. And then we'll keep doing that. And then if everyone's, everyone has had a turn to talk about each of the topics we have time for, which we'll probably need a part two, then we'll go back for a second round and people can have another bite at the apple. So we invite you, because of its hybrid meaning, to say your name and your counsel before you, before you speak. And again, we wanna allow everybody's, um, we wanna allow as many voices in the room per, again, the group agreement to, um, participate. We're gonna do our best to avoid any cross talk and, um, so that people can be clearly heard while they're speaking. If you have line by line suggestions for consideration by the committee, those are really hard to deal with in a group setting like this. So we wanna invite you to submit those online through the email, uh, that is provided for you in the group agreements. Just 'cause going line by line and saying, strike this and add this and do that. You're welcome to use your minute to say those things, but it would be very helpful if you would submit those in writing. Um, again, just so we can track all of the, sorry, not me, so the committee can track all of those suggestions. Because my guess is either those will be, um, supported by lots of you or there might be some conflict and it's easier to compare and contrast if we can, if they can see it in writing. So again, just, you're welcome to use your minute to do a line by line, but it would be super helpful if you would also submit that by email. For those of you who are doing that. Okay, those are the group agreements. I understand that there is a question on the floor from Sylvia, uh, to attend to the committee structure. But before we do that, we have asked the committee itself, as it currently exists, to have a presentation review about what's been done, because they have done a lot of work and they've taken a lot of time. We've asked them to present, so. Former Madam Chair, are you our presenter?
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna.
Do you want me to show a screen here?
Yeah, that'd be great. I'll just run off of my screen, so I'm not, I'll look at the room. Okay, so I just wanted to give folks kind of, um, a timeline of how we got here, um, and then what our next steps are. Um, so if you can go to the next slide. What our current bylaws say is that these can be amended by a two thirds affirmative vote of the delegates present. Thirty days advance notice must be given to all delegates until including text of the proposed amendments. There's nothing in our current bylaws about really giving it a major overhaul. The only thing it says is how to amend it. Um, and it, it does need a lot of work because it's missing a lot of guidance. Um, but I want to make sure that everyone knows that no decisions have been made on the draft bylaws. Until this body votes on those draft bylaws in their final form, we are ruling with, you know, our guiding document is the two thousand five bylaws. They have not been updated since two thousand and five. Um, the bylaws committee cannot say that these are our bylaws now. Um, uh, uh, just any group of people, staff at the FCC cannot say these are our bylaws now. What we need to do, what that process is, is a committee moves forward a draft bylaws. We talk about them as a body. We put forward feedback, suggestions, what do we like, what do we don't like. And then when we have a final draft, we have to wait thirty days to vote on it. So even then, it's not, we'll bring a final draft and vote that night on a brand new thing that no one has seen until it's maybe the agenda packed the week before. We have to wait thirty days. So we have time and we look forward to the discussion and feedback. Um, but I wanted to make sure that folks know that the draft bylaws that you see are not our current bylaws. That is not what we're operating under. Um, why the change and why now? So there are several things, if you compare, for example, the draft bylaws that have been made available, um, with the old bylaws, there are things that aren't covered and we were discovering as we went to address them through policies or procedures. Well, we can't really do that because it's not addressed in the bylaws in such a way that, that is helpful. So, um, as I start through this timeline, I'm hoping if we come here and there's an opportunity, um, for some questions as we, as we also roll your feedback. So to give that timeline, in nineteen seventy-six, the FCC was incorporated and the bylaws were created. Um, that was following unification, following the establishment of community councils. This organization came about, filed articles of incorporation, created bylaws. Um, those were updated each time or two. In two thousand and five, in the fall, there was the last review of the FCC bylaws. There haven't been any changes since two thousand and five. In the fall of two thousand and twenty-four, um, the staff here at FCC, along with the board, held two trainings, one in September, one in November, um, on the roles and responsibilities and training for delegates. Um, and then, then that there was sort of this understanding among the groups that were going was, there was the confusion between the coalition of community councils. So the groups from the community councils, be they officers, delegates, showing up in that space, wanting to talk about the issues of community councils and the board work that needed to be done for the nonprofit board that is the Federation of Community Councils, nonprofit board. Um, so in order to address that, it's, you know, it was something like, well, let's maybe take a look at the bylaws. That was further discussed at the Leadership and Officer Summit. Um, there was a strategic planning session for delegates on March fifteenth. March sixteenth was an all day training, um, for community council officers or interested officers. Or I'm sorry, people interested in being officer someday. Um, so right after that summit, on March nineteenth, there was a call for volunteers for the bylaw committee. That's in the minutes. Um, six delegates volunteered. And on April, or in April, we had, um, the bylaw committee had our first meeting. We went over a draft timeline and what is the purpose. And what our homework was, um, before our main meeting was, let's do an initial bylaws assessment. What are our bylaws? What are they missing? What do they need? May we started to talk about two governance models. Uh, we have the current model or we have a membership model. June twenty twenty-five was further consideration of that membership model. July twenty twenty-five, we didn't have an update because we had a picnic, so we didn't meet as the FCC. Um, August twenty twenty-five, we put up a draft of the new potential bylaws. We wanted folks to not be surprised with, you know, what might be considered a final draft. So we, we put forward the draft of the potential new bylaws and we asked for delegate feedback, initial thoughts. You know, any discussion that you could bring to the next conversation, please do. And then we formally introduced them in September with a vote no earlier than October. Uh, because thirty days. And if you could hit the next one. We wanna hear delegate feedback. That's where we are now. So that's where we are in the process of updating our bylaws. Hearing feedback at this meeting, perhaps at the next meeting, perhaps another special meeting. But we wanna hear your feedback in person and online, um, through email. In early November, um, we will take the feedback from this meeting, any future meetings as the bylaw committee, and review them, incorporate the feedback, and then we'll introduce a revised vision. If the plan, you know, if it goes according to plan, our plan is to introduce a revised vision to the board of delegates on November nineteenth at our regular meeting. If everyone looks at those bylaws at our November meeting and they're like, this is great. I love everything about this. We're in agreement. We still sit on those bylaws for thirty days because they have just been introduced. So the earliest we'll vote at this point is December. So I have received several questions like, why is there the urgency? I want to reiterate to folks, there is not a sense of urgency. We've been working on this for some time and we are at the discussion phase of this process. So we want to hear your concerns. We want to incorporate your feedback. And this is the opportunity to do so. Um, but we are not in a mad rush to get these ratified. We don't have a hard and fast deadline. Um, there's one thing that will be made easier and that is the fiscal year. For example, the fiscal year in our current bylaws is July to June?
Ju- ju- July first to June thirtieth.
July first to June thirtieth. Um, whereas most other entities, the federal government runs on, it's October to September. The municipality runs on a calendar fiscal year. So the fiscal year, as it's in the bylaws right now, isn't working for this board. So would it be nice if they were done by December? Sure. But if people aren't ready for it, that's okay. Um, so here are some of the highlights of the proposed changes. This is the whole point of legalize. I'm sorry, that shouldn't be there. That is a typo. That was the start of a thought.
Yeah.
That didn't go anywhere. Um, where you can keep up on information and changes. Um, so there is the website. Please feel free to reach out to me. Um, I have a new email. Oh, you did put the picture of the dog. Um, I have a new email that we'll make sure that is available. I mean, just set it up yesterday. Um, it's FCC dot vice chair at community councils dot org. And that is just for my duties here, so it doesn't get mixed up in my community council stuff. So with that, thank you for your grace, because public speaking is not my thing. Um, I do wanna make sure that I address Sylvia's question.
Do you want to ask?
And then.
Talk first.
Sure, that way I can.
And then we can start the process.
Then we can get, then we can start the process. So Sylvia, someone who is not a delegate can be on the bylaws committee because our current bylaws say so. Um, it is allowed and it's also pretty common in nonprofits to bring in experts. So Mike, Mike's role as this board's chair was not in question when we started this process. Um, so he was on the bylaws committee. There's been another question too about why was the ombudsman on our bylaws committee? He has a lot of experience in nonprofit boards, putting together bylaws. He's also very active in community council work, um, and was instrumental in, um, when they did the code change and put in the bylaws, um, the example bylaws for community councils about ten years ago, or excuse me, in two thousand and fourteen, he helped with that. So we saw his advice as an expert in writing bylaws. Um, and what we needed to do to make sure that things were in compliance with our organizations as, as they relate to community councils. So that's how someone who is not a delegate on the board can be on a committee. And also because committees aren't making decisions for the board. They're putting things together to present to the board for the board to go on. With that.
Daryl, did you have a question there? Daryl?
I'll, I'll come back to it, I'll come back to it in a minute. Um, can you, can you go over the difference between, uh, as you described, a membership model versus a delegate model?
Sure. So what we have now is every community council in Anchorage, you know, in the municipality of Anchorage, has one delegate and an alternate. And so they have the one vote on the various decisions that govern the nonprofit board. Um, and so it can be difficult to get forum and it can be difficult, um, to have a conversation and, and, and build on it. We're also running into the issue where, because community councils have different election cycles, um, we have a new delegate every single meeting, which means we are doing training every single year. Um, what a membership model is, is that all thirty-seven would still have a member. Um, and that membership would elect a board of directors. That board of directors would do the nonprofit part that we do during that first hour when we have our board meeting, like we have it now, and then the second hour is coalition. So that group of seven to eleven board of directors would do the nonprofit work. And then the other members that elected them to the board of directors, they would do coalition work. So they still have voices in matters. They still report back to their community councils. Um, they're just freed up to focus on community council work. And those who wanna do the nonprofit element can run for those, those seats.
Which actually would kind of aligning with what most of our community councils are with the executive boards and the general membership. Okay, um, Cliff, I see you've got a question online there?
Question.
Yeah, just real quick, um, I'm still trying to wrap my head around the delegates and members. Uh, and I keep on going back. Uh, now, we can all agree that, uh, the Articles and Corporation is a driving document behind the bylaws, correct?
Sure, yes, Articles.
All right.
Yeah.
There, that document specifically says that there will be no members of the corporation. Um, and then again, in accordance with the Alaska Nonprofit Corporation Act, ten dot twenty, it says in there that the bylaws, if there's a discrepancy between the bylaws and the articles, that the articles will, would prevail in this case. So what are we doing to prevent that from happening if we change that in the bylaws to members? Thank you.
Thank you. So we can, yeah, take that point and make sure that anything we do moving forward is on the same timeline. So we're not putting the car before the horse.
Right, yeah, there's, there's, I'm sorry to interrupt again, but there's a specific section on how. but there's a specific section on how to amend the Articles of incorporation. I'd, I'd encourage you to take a look at that.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, so could you just clarify again that whether it be member or delegate onto this body, the FCC, that is not directed by that person or individuals, whether they be a delegate or an alternate, however you want to name it. It's not dedicated or dictated by this group. It is dictated by the councils and their bylaws. Is that not correct?
That is correct. There is, I can add a clarification onto that. There is an element in here, in the draft bylaws that says unless otherwise stated in a community council's bylaws or rules of procedure, the chair is the delegate. Because there are some community councils where it is not addressed. So that way, this board isn't saying, your bylaws have to say this. And saying if your bylaws don't, this is the, this is who is, who is the delegate.
I just want to emphasize that it's not the top dictates down to the councils as to how the councils develop, what their relationship is or what their representation is.
That is correct.
Correct. Yeah, I think I might have dropped it.
Okay, any more questions about the presentation? Because then we're going to move into the bylaws discussion by item by item. Yes.
We're talking about to the coalition and what I call the nonprofits. So there, I don't know, are they two separate entities? And do we need two sets of bylaws then? And what happens when the amount of money gets granted to us by the municipality? Which one of those two are the granting the money to?
So correct me if I am wrong, but it would be the board for the nonprofit side that is dealing with that money. The coalition meets to talk about community council issues and problem solving and advocacy. So it would be the executive board of that board delegates that gets to sign tax giveaway and do position reviews and.
So can I do a point of clarification again?
Yes.
Because it's not addressed yet in your bylaws.
Correct.
So what, what we formulate in these bylaws will answer that question. And it can be a number of things. And that is why there was an, if you'll look at some of the things that were presented as possibilities, that is, that is the crux of this discussion, is to determine what those two things are, how they relate together and what those deliverables are and what it is. So I think that's a little bit putting the cart before the horse because we haven't really, haven't talked about it yet.
But that. Some great questions, yes. But it's perfect because that's exactly what we're looking for. Yeah. Have a question ever?
That's just my opinion.
We're just in questions. We're not reviewing the bylaws themselves yet. So we'll just take questions. Go ahead, Mr. Chair, you can follow up questions.
Okay.
Could you speak a little bit more to what sort of like decisions the executive board is making, like the day-to-day nonprofit sort of stuff? You know, like what sort of decisions would that board be making? And why is it, you know, yeah, you can get a little?
So what does the executive board do now?
I guess just in general, yeah, like in a nonprofit, like if somebody doesn't know how nonprofits work or hasn't served on a nonprofit board, what does that look like?
Sure, that is a great question. I've been doing this since July. We had a picnic and so then it was September. So I may not be the best person to talk to it, but Mike might be able to speak to it. Lori knows what happens in a nonprofit board. I look at the things before I sign them. The nonprofit board is legally and financially responsible for the well-being of the nonprofit. They would make decisions. They may delegate those, some of those decisions to their executive director, which they have one, they, they employ an employee and then that employee employs other employees. But ultimately, they are the legal and fiscal steward for the nonprofit organization. They would make all the decisions therein. As well as hold their meetings and hold function and perhaps, perhaps hold the space for these coalition conversations. But we have yet to understand that's what they have been doing. They've been holding space for these conversations, right? But their jurisdiction, if you will, is about the nonprofit itself. I could be more specific, but I'll. No, that's great. I was like, it's a lot of emails and it's.
Jason?
Yeah, thank you. So we've kind of been talking around the difference between the board and coalition and just wanted to point out our esteemed colleague, Sam Lake, handed us this. And I just would like to get, you know, to address this pretty directly just to understand better, you know, what the question is that's being raised and how this changes or doesn't our relationship with the assembly and whether it, it blocks. Like if I'm, if I'm from Hough in O'Malley and I'm not on the board, does that block my access to the assembly? That seems to be, and I don't want to speak, is, is that accurate?
It does not. So the FCC board, we can't, we can't tell community councils what they presented at their meetings. We can't tell them what to advocate for, nor can we advocate. So the FCC provides resources. So if you wanted, for example, a template of a resolution, the FCC has got, the FCC can't tell you how to write that resolution. The FCC can't tell you what your position should be. The FCC provides those kinds of resources regardless of how your councils want to move forward. We are not a barrier between anyone and the assembly. So you can go as a council president and speak for your council. You can go as a delegate with the backing of your council and speak for your council. You can go as just a resident of wherever you live and speak for yourself. And these bylaws do not create an additional barrier between councils and the assembly. It doesn't exist now and it wouldn't exist with any of the proposed changes.
Would it even be legal for the FCC to try to assert that?
No, it don't. I don't, I'm not aware, but I don't, like, if you want to. I'm not aware. Sorry, I'm not aware, I'm not like, you really live outside here. But no, no, I mean, the nonprofit organization is here to be in service to the community councils as a supporting organization, as a resource, as a facilitator. But they are politically neutral. They don't have a voice. They're not bringing, they're not speaking on your behalf. Like none of those things exist right now. And they are not proposed to exist in the future.
Josh?
Yes, thank you, Chair. In the old days, and up to now, with thirty-seven board members, we would have discussions about our budget and review it. And we'd have a broad discussion amongst ourselves before it would be submitted to the municipality and consequently the assembly for approval. There were times when that budget included line items for community council support in terms of, you have a certain amount of money you can spend each year and do as it what you will. For example, West Anchorage always holds candidate forums and we use that money for refreshments or part of this Bernard Rec folding Room fee or, you know, whatever we deem we should spend money on as, as something that we're doing, the council work. And the way you kind of described, the board has the money. They make the decisions. And I think maybe one of the things that needs to be flushed out, flushed out?
Sure.
Whatever the, whatever the verb is. Made clear is if those council representatives who then have the title of member versus board of directors would have any ability to say, board of director, can we see your budget? We can't approve it anymore, just the board of directors would. Whereas before, internally as an organization, everybody would have a vote on that budget to, to submit to the municipality. So if we saw what the board of director in, under the new regime, we saw the draft budget, but it doesn't have anything like that in there. And some of us who might be sitting around as members would go, really, that was really a key thing that we enjoyed having access to in the past as part of our municipal funding, supports individual councils on some of their efforts. Because most of us don't have a whole lot of money in our bank accounts. How, how would you address that? Would that just be lost? Or would it, would there be an opportunity? Or could there be some kind of caveat in the bylaws that would allow for that? Am I begging myself, please?
Yes, absolutely. And in the spirit of taking feedback instead of answering all the questions? That's right. We're just taking feedback. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, I hear you and I, I wrote it down. I'm following, yeah. I've already done this budget transparency. Yes.
We have a question online if I can read that?
We can. And we're gonna, we're gonna have to take like two more questions. And then I really would like to get to some specific feedback on each of the sections. So, because our questions are turning into more than questions. They're turning into feedback. So a true question.
We received an email today which has concerns and/or communication. Is that going to be addressed after this presentation?
This meeting was called to address the bylaws and to go through the, have the discussion about the bylaws. We're not addressing other things at this meeting.
Because it's a special meeting?
Correct. Okay.
Ready?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I have a question about, you say that the board of directors cannot take a controversial position or a political position. But they were, they, they play multiple roles because if, if someone's on the board of directors, they might be the president of a community council that might have a very strong opinion about a particular ordinance that might be in front of the assembly. But because they're on the board, do they have to refuse themselves and not be able to participate anymore in front of the assembly? Like they really are taking a political position.
With a different hat on. Different hats. One hat, you have to just be transparent about what hat you're wearing.
Yeah, well, wait. When you're in the assembly, you either testify on behalf of the organization or on your own self. So you may have totally different opinion and you justify like on your, you know, by yourself. That's just a very specific example. But like, a lot of things I disagree with. University or community council, but they want me to go to the, they want me to go to the assembly and say, yeah, we're against this. I'll go and say, yeah, we're against this.
That's a good question.
That's a good question. Yep, yeah, could be addressed.
I think it's a very tricky thing because the, the, just because you say that you have a different hat today doesn't convince a lot of people that you're really.
I mean, a hundred percent.
Yeah. Really being neutral as your role on the board of directors of the Federation of Community Councils.
No doubt about it. That was an Alaska phenomenon.
Well, that person is taking a, a position that I vehemently disagree with. But yet he's controlled, that person is, has a huge influence on the Federation of Community Councils. It's a very tricky.
It's tricky. Yeah, and so when, when we talked about roles and responsibilities, remember that we talked about the role of one voice and the role of speaking with the voice of the mission of the organization, which may, might mean from time to time that it's in conflict with your personal opinion and/or the opinion of your particular community council. But that's not, this organization has to have a voice of itself. And yes, it's tricky as a lifelong Alaskan, I'll tell you. It's very hard to have, wear all the hats. It's very, it is very hard. And so you have to work extra hard to show up in, with the hat that you get to wear. No doubt, as Alaska problem. We got one more comment and then we're going to move to the section. Yeah. Yeah.
Since the bylaws are a legal document, what attorney has reviewed and helped prepare them? Which would be appropriate?
Please.
Steve Mahoney is our nonprofit attorney that we've used previously for our other like policies that you guys have passed over the past year.
It's a tax attorney.
Can I do just an extension on that question? Just because why, why, why wasn't Steve Mahoney here in addition to, since you invited Orger to help answer some legal questions?
He, he could potentially be at a future meeting. It's just expensive to have a lawyer here. So I think, you know, I don't know, Sarah.
And we're gathering feedback here on, you know, what's unclear? What do we want in the bylaws? We're not making any decisions tonight. So we didn't need a legal opinion. So we didn't need to say.
A lot of the feedback, it, it points to legal, legal issues. So I'm just, it would be really important.
So as a step in your process, one of the steps is that you're going to run it through a lawyer before you? Oh, yes, yes.
We did it.
I did. But you're gonna do it again. Before we have our attorney day. Before, before you present a final option. Yes. All right. So let me just go through some of the topics that we want to attempt to address this evening.
Your side.
Yeah, we will have a part two. I can just tell you that right now because I have nine topics to get through. And there's no possible way that if every single one of you gets one minute, we're gonna make it through. But we'll, we're gonna try, okay? So we're gonna try. So here, let me just tell you what the topics are so you can get ready. And if you don't have a strong opinion about one topic, I just encourage you, so that we can get through the things, to reserve your comments for the place where you have a strong opinion because you get a minute, okay? So the topics that we want, and again, we try to pick big topics, not line by line, because that's just tedious for everybody. So we want to talk about, we want to get your feedback on the rights of members, the relationship to the coalition in the bylaws. Your very question, Kevin. Officer elections, meeting noticing, standards of conduct, fiscal year, as noted by your.
Are these written down somewhere in the background?
Yes, can we put them on the screen?
I didn't, I didn't.
Put them on the screen, okay? Insurance requirements, committees, and anything else on your mind. Those are the topics we try, we are going to start with. We will get to anything else on your mind, obviously. I will just tell you right now, there's no possible way in the amount of time left in this meeting that we will get to all of those things. I am going to go in this order. You can all, you got it? Yes, so needless. Oh, all right, thank you. Okay, so the way we're going to do this is I'm going to introduce the topic. I'm going to ask our bylaws committee person to just say a little bit about that topic. And then I'm going to go in the order of my piece of paper with the people. And if you don't have anything to say, we'll just say pass and I'll go to the next person. And I'm going to have a clock with my one minute. Okay, so the first order, the first topic is the rights of members. Would you like to introduce that topic and just say a little bit, like a two-second version of rights of members? Sure, so the rights of members are you would be electing the board of directors who are eligible to serve on the board of directors. And, oh, and you are, yeah, you can also remove members of the, I'm sorry, you can remove directors from the board of directors as a member.
And dissolve the organization.
And dissolve the organization. Thank you. Sorry, I didn't think I was going to do that part. So what we're looking for here is, if you agree, that's great. But what we really want to hear is if you have constructive feedback about the draft, right? So if you'd like to use your one minute to agree, that's lovely. I'd love for you to use your one minute to provide constructive feedback because that's really what we're doing here. So Lizzie, you are first. Do you have a comment?
Uh, pass.
Okay, awesome. Emily?
Pass.
Dirk?
I will pass.
Thank you. Bob from Bay Shore. I should probably do it that way.
I don't understand why there's a need to change the structure.
Okay. Do you have any other, do you want to say anything else?
It, it seems to me that a lot of this is contingent upon the, the two phases of the FCC, the nonprofit side versus the coalition side. And I've been coming to these meetings since the mid 90s and I've never seen them spend excessive amount of time on the corporation side. So I, I think it's a waste of effort.
Okay, thank you. Kaitlyn from Bear Valley. Thank you. Debbie from Birchwood.
Uh, she's not here, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh, she's not here?
Yeah.
Oh, thank you. Kevin from Campbell Park.
Just my feeling is that we're not doing something that restricts the rights. So far, we've mentioned what maybe the rights are. But I, my concern is that we don't put something in that takes away a right.
Okay. Do you have, um, any other specific things that you would like the committee to consider about that? Or cautionary tale?
When you're talking about the earlier budget and, and you're, Laurie, I'm talking about you, it said something about transparency. I think a better word would be, or inclusive word would be flexibility. Because I'm a, what my concern is, is that one small group is gonna tell all the rest, oh, you can't do that because whatever, right? That's my kind of example.
I got you.
I don't wanna run into that wall. It's a, it, it's still in my mind a ground up.
And that's your minute. Thank you. Daryl.
Uh, she's online.
Yeah.
Daryl.
I think you need to, uh, really consider the, as both Kevin and Kathy have mentioned. One, I think the delegates need better control over the budget because it's the budget that supports them, not just the corporation. The corporation's there to support the, the councils. But I think they need to be more controlled with the membership as far as the budget. Additionally, when, uh, a board position is vacated, what I saw in, in there was that the board would then elect the next person to fill that position. I think that needs to go to the membership. If we're calling, if we're using membership and delegates anonymously, I think that information, that vote needs to come from the delegates themselves.
Okay, thank you. Sylvia.
Sorry, I couldn't get off mute. Um, I do agree that, um, we as, the, you know, the, the, this particular council members, presidents and delegates, I believe that we need to have more transparency with our budget. Also with our financials, whether or not we have a quorum, they should be dispersed, the whole membership. And also, um, you know, committees to me are very important because I do the, the work. Like you expressed, the beginning of this meeting with the bylaws committee. But there needs to be more transparency. Who's sitting on the board? You know, what do they bring to the particular committee so that everybody can feel comfortable? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, Cliff, uh, from Eagle River.
Hi, yeah. As we consider the draft bylaws that proposed changes that turn delegates to members, I can't say this enough, it's imperative that we first amend our Articles of incorporation. Uh, again, the current, the current Article seven says that there will be no members of the corporation, which directly conflicts with the proposed changes in the bylaws. This situation necessitates careful legal and procedural review for the following reasons. Again, the Alaska Nonprofit Corporation Act specifically state in, uh, ten dash twenty dot one five one, Articles of incorporation relationship to bylaws. Uh, any amendments to the organizational structure that are outlined in the articles must be formally addressed before any changes can be made in the bylaws. So, you know, the Articles of incorporation serve as our supreme governing document. Changes to our bylaws must align with the language and intent of these articles. To avoid legal complications and ensure compliance, we must first rectify this existing language. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, so close to one minute. So close. Next one. Good job. That was, I was good. I appreciate it. Uh, Joy, you're next.
Yeah, I think that from, um, from the discussion I've heard so far, it sounds like we're switching to this board of director members, the seven to eleven member board. Um, really because it's inconvenient to have to deal with a large group of delegates like we have. And I, I am uncomfortable with having a small group like that have decision-making authority without the input of all of the delegates. So similar to what Sylvia said, I would rather see that board of members or directors, um, be more of a committee, a standing committee that's established. But when decisions are to be made, that goes before all of the delegates and not just before that board.
Thank you so much. Kelly from Fairview.
Yeah, it's my understanding we're gonna be voting on this anyway. So if people don't like the membership solution brought forth, then presumably you would say no to the bylaws. So I'm also concerned about the transparency and about members slash delegates feeling like they have a voice. And I think what I'm hearing is that members slash delegates don't feel like they're going to have a voice.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Sandy from Hillside. I think she's on mute right now. Can you with us, Sandy? I can come back to you. Okay, come back to you. Okay, Jason from Huffman.
Yeah, thanks. Uh, I think what I would, I'd like to see some consideration for a short board, some sort of short board rules. Uh, just to.
Say more about what that means, short board rules.
It's where if you have a certain, if you have a low number of assigned people seated and you have even fewer show up, if you technically have a quorum, you have a higher threshold to pass something. So if you have the minimum of seven and you need five to have a quorum or whatever, you need unanimous basically uh, in order to pass anything, because you don't want them to be a situation where you have so few people take a decision for a board that should be eleven.
Thank you. Um, Sandy, I'm coming back to you.
Okay, I'm going to pass on this. Thank you.
Okay. That was great. Thank you. Uh, Chris, uh, from Midtown.
Yeah, I'm concerned about committees. The FCC is an administrative body and, and they need to have committees for administrative purposes. Beyond that, I don't see a use of the FCC having committees. And I'll give you some examples. We had a group that got together and they asked for a meeting. We got the meeting. They didn't have to come under the assistance of the FCC. District one, we get together on a regular basis and we talk about different things. We get solutions. If we all agree, we go forward and make a resolution. We don't need to be on the umbrella of the FCC. I am concerned about what the ramifications of some of these committees could be. Um, I'd like to know what the purpose is beyond administrative.
All right.
I like the idea of, of three councils working around a. We have different people come to our needs and different topics. We might have four people one week, another month we have four. It just depends on the topic.
There's your minute.
And us in our own areas, we're not governing.
There's your minute. I'll come back. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Uh, Charles.
I'll pass.
Are you passing? Okay, great. Jade.
Yeah, um, thanks. Let me start my turn here. So I didn't make sure I'm doing overtime myself. Um, yeah, I think my feedback would be, um, how, like the question of how it would be handled if a member is no longer on the board of their community council. Like maybe they, uh, still live there or they moved and they've been elected to a multiple year position on the bylaws or on the, on the FCC board. And then, um, I think it'd be great to have some sort of structure for the budget. So like I assume that the vast majority of the budget goes towards your salary area and the rent for the building and, and Ally's salary. And so maybe if there is a, something in the bylaws, it's like, hey, everything that's not rent and salary and computers, you know, the fifty K or whatever that's left over that's spent to support the councils, maybe that money is more of a free for all that's in sort of the committee model, that like there's a different way of managing that slice of the budget that's separate from the rest of the operating budget. Um, and I think it'd be nice to see some more language in the, in the bylaws that's specific about like, what's the purpose and intent
There's your minute.
of the community councils, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Okay. Pamela from Northeast.
Yes, so I, I'm gonna say that I agree with a lot with that sort of strength here. But I will say that the membership needs to know more about what their role will be and how that will play out, um, whether, and last week, so that we're not frightened by a new word. Um, just what those roles are and what those deliverables are that they expect from the FCC.
Thank you. Gary from Old Seward.
Oh, he's not here.
Oh, he's not here?
Yeah.
Sorry. Uh, John from Rabbit Creek. Online?
I have a comment, um, I guess about, uh, member rights. And I, I think that, uh, this bylaws change will, will free the delegates' members from, um, a, a lot of what we, a lot of the time that we've spent on administrative tasks. Uh, and will, uh, actually increase our opportunity for, uh, cooperation among the coalition, uh, with our advocacy work.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Marilyn from Rogers Park. Oh, she's sitting outside. Oh. Kathleen from Russian Jack.
So my one, one thought is, is at least recently, I know we've not had issues with voting and not had enough members. But how are, if we do go with this process, are the, the new membership board gonna come to the coalition meetings and, and say, what are your interests? What do you wanna see? Which might help some of the other issues is, is get some dialogue from that aspect.
That is also the next topic on this agenda. So if you have more to say, we'll, we'll come back to you about that. Okay, great. Carrie from Stanley.
Um, uh, my main concerns are, um, limiting the voice of the delegates and the citizens. Um, also, the proposal brought forward could allow the non-delegates to become executive board members of the FCC. But also, most importantly, that definitely we need to have qualifications for the executive board and limitation of powers.
Cool. Great. Uh, Roger.
Yeah, uh, with, without any comment on specific rights, what I really would like to see developed is a fairly extensive chart of, of potential activities is slash issues during the year. And then show how they would handle. Would they be handled by, by member, uh, delegate? Would it be handled by the, uh, by the board and so on? So people can see that contrast.
Like a decision-making chart, like who has power?
But just, and here, yeah, but just the whole list for what might occur during the year. Here's how that would be handled relative to those bottom.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, John from South Edition.
Um, I, I like the idea of having a board taking care of routine administrative tasks because I'm so busy on other things, I don't wanna pay attention to some of that stuff. I want someone else to do it. But I do, but I do think that the community council side, where we're talking about issues and we're talking about policies and stuff, is very important. And we need everybody to feel that they're participating. And if people are, are losing confidence in our community council process, that is scary to me. I don't want people to lose confidence. So I, I have mixed feelings about this.
You have a few more minutes or a few more seconds here? Would you, anything else you wanna?
Nope.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Uh, Stephen from South Fork.
Online. Stephen, you still there? I think he might have fallen off.
Okay.
If he jumps on, I'll let you know.
Okay, great. Sarah from Spinar.
Pass.
Okay. Uh, Sarah from, uh, Taku and Campbell.
I'm gonna pass.
Okay, great. And Kathy from Turnigan.
Yeah, I think I, I expressed the concern about, you know, budgeting and, and what may, who makes the decision about if councils themselves can use any of that budget, none of it's just done by the board. Um, and this is more of a, a technical comment then for the rest of my one minute is we're using a lot of nouns interchangeably. There's delegates, representatives, membership, coalition, board. And then Ari, what's your official title right now?
Executive Director.
Executive Director. So then you've got FCC executive director, then you've got FCC board of directors and et cetera. And so I think in all of this work, you need to have a really clear definition and, and narrowing down of, if we go this route, what our titles are. Um, because coalition and membership and membership, council, council, membership, it gets pretty confusing.
Okay, so, uh, maybe you need that no matter what. Okay. Uh, Michael from Turnigan.
Hi, I wanna, uh.
Turnigan. Sorry. Go ahead, Michael.
I would like to, um, let everybody know that it's there. Those of us online that chose not to come to that meeting have a very hard time when there's so much noise and confusion going on in this meeting. One person needs to speak at a time. Because we just can't understand what's going on otherwise. And as far as the, what are, what we're talking about right now, the old bylaws seem to be fairly loose, but the new bylaws seem to be pretty tight. And I think perhaps they're a little bit too tight. And, and perhaps what they're doing is they're, they're putting everything, um, into the, the few delegates to make the decisions when all of us have been making the decisions all these years. And so I, I, I will send some, uh, line by line stuff in. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for submitting the line by line as well. And, uh, last but not least, on this particular topic, uh, Stephen from the university area.
Hello. Kind of share, uh, some of my thoughts to Jason, to John regarding, uh, short boards can be problematic. So maybe, maybe just alternate members on the board or something. Um, and, and share John's thoughts on, uh, it's like to have a group, take care of the day-to-day stuff so we can focus on, you know, interacting with other community councils. It's really our only chance once a month to focus on what other people are getting. Maybe some of this information could affect the budget, be voted on or looked at by the entire group. You know, part of the due process. It'd be like a policy or something. Maybe, maybe we take some of this stuff, we're in a policy. For, membership, I really don't have any issues with it. We, we have our own little membership requirements for the university area. That was not the original delegate.
There's your minute, Joe. Okay, thank you. And I'll just say to all of you, if you have more concrete suggestions, like, uh, some things get this way and some things get that way, putting that in writing would be super helpful. So just invite all of you. One person said they were gonna do that, but again, just invite you all to, to do that. Okay. So you touched on this, but we're gonna move on to the relationship to the coalition in the bylaws. Again, your comments can be, um, very constructive. All of your comments, super constructive in this moment. Thank you for modeling that. And also I will just say, if, just based on the comment we just heard, that if you also feel like it should be reflected somewhere else out of the bylaws, like a policy or some other, feel free to let us know that as well. I think that committee would welcome that kind of feedback as well. Okay, we're gonna go back in order. This is the topic again, is the relationship to the coalition in the bylaws. And again, I'll just invite you with a friendly, if you'd like it somewhere else as well, please say that too. Okay? So Lizzie, you're first.
No comments.
Okay. Emily from Airport Heights.
Pass.
Okay. Dirk from Basher.
Um, yeah, I, um, I, I, if I understand this process properly, the, I would like to see something that helps to direct the, how do we elect the directors of the delegates or members? Is that the board of directors? Is it among the members? I would like to see some delineation between how the, um, director is the, for instance, if the board of directors, is the president of the board, are they the president of the delegates? I'm not sure how that works. So I don't understand that relationship at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Sam, clarification very much needed. Okay. Bob from Bayshore and Clap.
I don't, I don't think I have good understanding what the relationship, uh, of the, um, coalition is with respect to the bylaws. It's just not clear to me.
I'm gonna pause there for a moment. I skipped a step and that is my fault, um, to ask, um, our bylaws person to just summarize what the, what the change is. So I, I'm gonna come back to you, Bob, because I, I, I didn't, I skipped a step.
I was also, I, I fully admit, I was going to ask to pass on that one because I'm interested in what you all have to say because humans wrote this and we, there might be a gap.
Okay.
That some of you noticed and reached out to us and I would like to hear about that.
that some of you noticed and reached out to us and I would like to hear about that gap and how we might fix it. Okay, then I'm gonna go back. Bob, you have forty more seconds. Would you like it?
It's a word salad to me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Caitlin from Bear Valley.
I don't...
Okay, Kevin from Campbell Park.
Just the idea that if there's some member or a community council, I'll just say that, has an issue, what's the, what's the way to solution, how do they bring it then to the board, right? I think what what I'm hearing out there in my councils is that, whoa, what happens if we don't agree with something, right? Some policy or whatever it's going on, even with the assembly? How do we speak? How do we get to address that? Who do we take it to? I just hope there's be clarity on that.
Okay. So just can I ask a question? So you want clarification about your role, your voice to the assembly, your voice to the FCC?
No, the 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 voice of the community council rep to the Board of Directors.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Darryl with Chugia.
Yeah, I'm 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 fuzzy on the whole. I know Mike and I had a conversation earlier about the coalition versus the delegates or the the board. To me, the board and the delegates are synonymous. And I think where I have the issue is that there are, there can be non-delegates as board members. And I think that's the issue for me.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Sylvia with Downtown.
I believe we need to have procedural measures in place so that we can, anyone that did that can, that has a question, they can actually look at these procedural measures and walk through them. And I'm very concerned about a Board of Directors not voicing the opinion of Downtown the way that Downtown will do it at this level. Thank you.
Thanks Sylvia. And Cliff from Eagle River. Pass. And Joy from Eagle River Valley.
I think this is an area that needs more clarification.
Okay, any suggestions?
I think the role of the Board of Delegates has to be very limited and very clear. And I think the communication between the board and the delegates or the coalition, the terminology is confusing. Between the board and the coalition, I think that that really needs to be clear. That the board has communication responsibilities to the delegates to always keep them informed of what's going on within the board.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. And Kelly from Fairview?
Pass.
Okay. And Sandy from Hillside? Uh, she's passing. I can read her lips on that. Okay, and Jason from Huffman?
Yeah, thanks. So like some have said, I I appreciate the the separation of duties that could come with the board being there. I do, because we got, I got involved to be a member of my community council and talk about community issues. I do think that there needs to be a clear line in the bylaws that, you know, addresses these concerns and makes and makes it clear that this is not what's going to happen. I think that will go a long way to helping people. And I feel back to what Kevin said about limiting language, what the board can't do may be unofficial. So, you know, that's what I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and Chris from Midtown.
Uh, yeah, I think it would really help if you would tell us where in these bylaws we're talking about the coalition. There've been several people, including me, not understanding. So I am really concerned about a small group of people making decisions from Midtown. We are murderers left and right. We have violence. We have vandalism. We have homeless. We have all these really negative things. We have broken windows. We're getting more and more broken windows with wood put up instead of windows. And Hillside is worried about fires. Two really important topics we should do a little work on ourselves.
Thank you. Uh, Charles from Mountain View.
I can appreciate what you're saying about Midtown. I mean, from Mountain View. The question, the only part that I have any question about or that the, that brought to me is is the non-members, non-member delegate, non-member stuff there, where we're trying to just get my head wrapped around what that's actually about.
Do you have anything specific about that? You have two more minutes, seconds?
Just trying to figure out what that's about.
Okay.
That's what I have.
That's where you are. Okay.
Once all that's...
I get it. Jade from North Star.
Yeah, um, I think this is a question maybe to address once a demo, I mean. Is there anything in the current bylaws or in the future bylaws, proposed bylaws that addresses what the coalition meetings are like and how they're, how all that is structured? Because I think the answer to that is probably no. And maybe that's an open question if we wanted to or not. And then I think kind of as some others have said, I think it might be nice to see something in the bylaws that's clear about how the FCC nonprofit and a Board of Directors are not, they're they're not allowed to speak for the councils and that the city shall not speak to them in lieu of speaking to the individual councils. And so I think like some explicit things in the bylaws would be good. And maybe that's where the definition of what the coalition is and why it exists. Because if there's something in the bylaws that says, hey, the city has to speak to the to the individual councils and to the coalition and shouldn't just deal with the board, then like if that's in the bylaws, then you're, the board is gonna make sure that...
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna pause here for a moment and just take the question. Does the current bylaws speak to the coalition? No. No, okay. There's the answer to that question, which is another reason why I can't point to it. Not that I can actually point to it, but I, but I thank you for that suggestion as well. When we can point to something, can you point to it? Okay, thank you. Pamela from Northeast.
Yes, so I'm going to ask for clarification with the voice of the FCC would be the board. And and then to look at policies, procedures, and bylaws. And those relationships to the members. And I'm thinking annually so that those things are visible and passed and adhered to and supported by the membership, delegates, whatever term you want to use, yeah, we need a glossary. And then I would say the non-member issue on the board, I think, is an important thing to look at to see how that works intensively and if they have any backup from their council associate.
Okay, stop. All right. John from Rabbit Creek.
Yeah, I just wanted to add what's been mentioned a couple of different ways, which is just that we need to clarify that the board does not speak for individual community councils and doesn't represent their opinions or views.
Great, thank you. Do you have anything else to add? Sorry, I cut you off.
Nope.
Okay. Kathleen?
Pass.
Okay. Carrie.
Mine's just a little higher level. Um, I just feel that these bylaws were not started properly. Or were they requested by the members, body, and they were just a surprise. And they were a full, full set of, they're completely rewrite, and this is not an amendment.
Okay. You got more time? Okay. All right, Roger.
I do think it's real important that the bylaws reflect differences between the coalition and and the board. And and I think it utterly fails in that regard.
You have more time? Would you like to, okay. John from South Edition?
So I'm I'm not sure which page this is, but under Article Five, Board of Directors, Section One, General Powers, it says, "The affairs of the corporations shall be managed by its Board of Directors, thereafter known as directors." Then you could put, "The affairs of the coalition shall be managed by the delegates, thereafter known as delegates." And under affairs, you might go, a definition, what are these affairs? They're not political, they're not taking position, blah blah. But under the coalition, you might go, those policies are are part of the definition of the responsibility. I think that's where you start delineating the difference between the corporation and the coalition, because this is so confusing.
Okay, great. And thank you for that specificity, I'll just add. Okay, uh, South Fork, Stephen from South Fork. Did he come back?
No.
Okay, still gone?
No.
Okay, Sarah from Spinar. Okay, Sarah from Taku Campbell.
Pass.
Okay, and Kathy from Turnigan.
I'll pass.
Okay, Michael from Turnigan Arms.
So I have a kind of a concern about the non-members being on a number of directors. I mean, I I see that it shall not exceed one-third. I think it's, I think we're kind of removing ourselves based on these new bylaws from what the the whole premise of the FCC is about. It's not about inviting other people in, it's about what we're doing as community councils and supporting our community councils. And I I see other people coming in and wanting to be part of the board who don't really care, but it's a feather in their cap. They can put it on their resume and see, oh, I'm I'm a part of this board, I'm part of that board. And they really don't, they're not looking out for our interests. Thank you.
Great, thank you. And Stephen from University.
Can I get it started yet?
Yes.
The only, the only thing I'd add is, you know, I I'm interpreting like non-members or directors, people who are elected and have to finish out a term, but otherwise may be a little longer, be like affiliated with the community council or may not hold like a position on the community council. So that's how I kind of see the not directors that are non-members. I'm kind of almost in that situation myself. I'm hoping to step down, both this and the community council.
Do you, you have a little more time? Do you have a, do you have an opinion about that or you're just noticing it?
No, I'm just, I'm just noticing that because we had someone step down as the federated community council rep, not building that position, he's not the ultimate rep. And and I ended up...
There's your name. Okay, all right, Ryan. You guys are showing how we're down here. All right. We're on to item number three. We're making some progress here.
I'm hitting the, the term non-board members.
Yeah.
And I don't know what that means.
Yeah.
Excuse me, non...
It would be non-members on...
Excuse me, non-members. So...
So our point of...
If that phrase is really...
Okay, so a point of clarification.
Clarify that.
What does that mean? Yes. So an example of that would be... Yeah.
Section two.
I have so many to tabs. An example of that would be the current Board of Directors, for example. I was elected in May, but I'm done as a delegate when my council has their elections in February. But my term right now is for a year that goes through to July. So between February and July, right, you know, February, May, when I am elected or not, I would be a non-member. Because the the chair of your... Because the chair of my community council is the delegate. So for every round, you know, where there's a different set of elections or bylaws or who's the delegate or how is that determined? You know, I, but I did put on here, clarify, what does that mean? I'm gonna hold, I'm gonna hold comments about that for right in a second. I'm really gonna ask you a question. Can your CC elect you to, you know, let you be the delegate? I I don't know why it has to be the president or vice president or blah blah. It's a person that represents their community council. So I'll write that down as a thing to clarify? Because we have more people who want to comment about that. So I I could, I could, let me just have a point of... I could leave my list and I could come to the conversation of non-members or I could go back to this.
Go ahead and clarify if you would, would be non-members?
Okay. So I'll take, I will, I'm gonna take comments about the definition of a non-member. You want to go through my, I'm gonna go through my list here. I'm gonna go through my list. Hello, Lizzie, do you have a comment about non-members now that we've had a clarification?
Oh, can can people just raise their hand?
Do you want to just do that?
Yeah, if you want to...
Okay, I'm on.
Yeah, just that you have one.
Then I'll take Jade.
Um, yeah, just a question like that.
Online, raise your hand.
Thank you.
So do the bylaws state that to get elected to the board in the first place, you have to actively be a delegate or whatever the order is from your community council? Is that right?
When you were elected.
When you were elected.
The draft bylaws? Uh, draft. The draft or the current?
The draft bylaws.
No.
Okay. Would be great to know.
What about the current ones?
The current one, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that clarifying question. Anyone else have a question about non-voting?
Yeah, I do. You know, I'm looking at the bylaws and we're kind of done. And it says, "An alternative shall be appointed by community councils recognized under a principal hold law." If it's just a person that comes from the CC, and why would we want to change that?
Okay. Comments from the screen about this new conversation about member, what a non-member is?
It sounds like it's a very broad term. And I think it needs to be better defined because a non-member, if you, if you're a delegate, if we're using delegate members synonymously, this goes back to Cliff's comment as well. But if we're gonna use that as a term, it has to be defined because it could be anyone off the street. It could be someone outside of the community of Anchorage. I mean, it's way too broad a term.
Awesome. Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Well, Kevin and then Roger.
Just quickly, I I have some concern about the fact that it looks like we would be voting potentially for someone to be a board member for two years.
Yeah, I'm getting to that next.
But I mean, they could be four or five months away from from terming out from their community council. And then would they then be a member for a year and seven months or whatever later? I have some big concerns about that.
Okay, I'm gonna come back to that conversation in one second after Roger's comment. And then I'm gonna come back to the two-year, and that's probably the last conversation we're gonna have time for tonight.
Yeah, it's my feeling that the person must be a delegate when they are elected to the Board of Directors. And in my mind, the non-member really doesn't need to be a term because it it only is that period of time should happen, what you're talking about, that they they go into their second year of their term and they are no longer the delegate. But as long as they were the delegate when they were elected, they could continue to serve. So we no longer have to worry about the term non-member being elected to the board.
Which would be the way the current bylaws stated. Is that correct from my view? Okay. Okay, last but not, oh, yeah, sorry.
Actually, Colin, there is, there is in language here a distinction between the case you're describing of where somebody is a delegate, effectively a member, when they're elected, they can continue the term. Non-members would be people who were not delegates all the time. And that, and this version is limited to a third. And we've bounced around whether there should be any, whether there should be some. So a third was a guess, but I'm hearing it's non-members, there's no support.
Okay, all right, awesome. Okay, I'm going to this question of officer elections. And I'm gonna turn to for a brief synopsis, and then we're gonna go around, and then I think we're gonna be timed up. So let's get a brief synopsis of officer elections. That says what it what, what it is currently from the 2005 version and what is proposed. So our current elections happen in May. We have a chair, vice chair, secretary treasurer.
And they conserve two consecutive terms.
They conserve two consecutive terms that are one year. The election of officers, thanks, now I'm back on my roll. Um, the election of officers in the draft, they serve two terms that is on a rotating basis.
Staggered.
Staggered, yes, thank you. That's the better word. The staggered basis, so you don't have the overturn of your entire board all at once. So the way we've proposed it in here is, like, I think it's like drawing straws or, you know, drawing from a hat, basically, who's going on the A rotation to the B rotation, and the two years would go from there. So that's the difference.
And they conserve three two-year terms.
Three two-year terms. Okay, so there's terms and term limits. Let's, in terms of the glossary, let's be clear, terms are how long the piece last term limits is. You have to stop when you get to the end of your term limit, right? So this, these new draft have both terms and term limits.
What section are you in?
Thank you.
Absolutely. Article five, section three, term limits.
Okay, what is it?
Sorry, no pinch number.
Okay.
No.
Say it again, Article five.
Article five, section three, term limits. And then if you're looking at the old...
And then if you're looking at the old bylaws, it's Article Five, Section Two, tenure of officers.
Okay, so we're really just talking about the officer elections in this moment, not all the other ways that you can be in the room. Okay? Okay, Lizzie, you're up. Lizzie?
Is that a...
Yeah. Comment about officer elections, terms and term limits. No? Okay, thank you. Emily from Airport Heights.
Um, just in general, I'd like to say thank you so much for working on this to the bylaw committee. It's a lot of work, and I have no further comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And George from Basher.
No comment.
Okay, thank you. And Bob from Bay Shore Club.
I'm good with the recommendation.
Okay. And Caitlin from Bear Valley.
No comment.
Okay. Kevin from Campbell Park.
No comment.
Darryl from Chugiak.
No comment.
And Sylvia from Downtown.
Um, I believe that maybe the pattern should follow the community councils of one-year terms for this board. And also, I want to point out, Adrienne, are you gonna read the messages? I see that Phil from Mountain View has a lot of comments on those messages, so I don't know if you were aware of that. Thank you.
Do you have a next problem?
Uh, we are, they are capturing all the messages, thank you. Cliff from Eagle River.
No comment.
Okay. Joey from Eagle River Valley.
Um, two things, uh, you know, better description on the non-members and whether non-members have a limited term, much more limited than their two-year term. And the second part of it is, talks about the board having two members from one council. I think it should be limited to one per council. And it also talks about the board being as geographically diverse as possible. I would like to see specific call-outs for the outlying areas like Birdwood and Eagle River, Chugiak area, to definitely have a representative on there, because too many times, you know, the rest of the community councils that are in the city have a much stronger voice because of their numbers. So I'd like to see the Eagle River area specifically called out to be part of this board.
Thank you, Joey. Kelly from Fairview. Sandy from Hillside.
I'm in a pass.
Okay, and Jason from Huffman O'Malley.
I just wanna concur with Roger and what he said about being a delegate at the time of election but being able to serve after that.
Thank you. And Chris from Midtown.
Um, I prefer one-year terms and, yeah, I think that's funny, and I prefer one-year terms.
Okay.
That's what we do in the CCs. Just carry it forward.
Okay, thank you. And Charles from Mountain View.
It doesn't happen in all the CCs, because in ours, it's actually two-year terms and they're staggered, so...
Come to mind.
I'm just, I'm just saying, so as far as saying what each community council, they're all different. They're all gonna do their own thing, nobody's dictating how they do it. So, um, I don't have a problem with the two-year terms, staggered.
Thank you. Uh, Jade?
Yeah, um, I think if, uh, it would be good to maybe clarify the reasons why it could be potentially disruptive or time-consuming to have that change every year. Um, I've been on half private boards, it's annoying to try to meet up and thank change signers, that kind of thing. So maybe some clarity from you guys would be helpful. I think maybe potentially even that floating idea, maybe there should be something in the bylaws about, there should be, if possible, one board member from, it could be assembly districts, maybe as like a way to ensure that geographic diversity, or you could, you could phrase it like, as a first pass, that is a role, but if we don't get somebody who's like willing to put their name in the hat to be the board member from each of those, from each assembly district, then we go down, you know, the west to somebody else.
Thank you. Uh, Pamela, Northeast.
Yes, so I'm gonna agree with staggered position terms and with one representative per council. So I'm a board member. And I'm going to ask a question that I don't know that you can answer now. And what is the fiduciary responsibility of those board members in doing any board insurance?
Oh.
Thank you.
Do you want to hold on to that question? Okay, let's hold on to that, we'll come back to that. Thanks, Pamela. Um, John, Rabbit Creek.
Rabbit Creek has staggered, uh, one-year terms and two-year terms. So there's a, so there are different kinds of seats, so, um, I guess that's the only, that was just an informational comment, so.
Thank you. Uh, Kathleen?
On the board of directors appointing someone, if there, if somebody has been picked off of the board for whatever reason, it says through the length of their term. I'm wondering if it shouldn't be, if you're going to have the board of directors doing it, it wouldn't, I honestly think it might be better to have it done by all thirty-seven. But if not that, it should be only through the next election cycle.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Cardi, Carrie? Okay, great. Roger?
No comment.
Okay. John from South Edition.
I, I've heard people say that they're fearful that having the board of directors vote on the officers, they're having, it's almost like a little clique out there, and they're separated from the delegates. Why don't the delegates vote for all the officers and the board?
Thank you. Okay. Stephen, did you get, come back? I think not.
Yeah.
Okay. Sarah from Spinnard. Oh, pass. Okay. Sarah from Taku Campbell.
Pass.
Okay. Kathy from Turnigan.
Uh, thank you. I haven't looked through these line by line by line, so correct me if I'm missing something. I'm on Article Five, Board of Directors, and I don't see any section in there that actually spells out how board of directors are elected, how, when, why, who.
There would be a section on bylaws, the whole board, and then there'd be a section on officers. I don't have any.
Okay, so it's somewhere else and not under board of directors?
Yes.
And so is it, uh, the members of all thirty-seven councils would vote for all board members and all officers like John said, or is it something else in the draft?
Give me a...
Yeah.
Please.
I'm gonna pause your time, and then we'll get your question answered.
In the draft, it is the larger body elects the board of directors.
Okay.
Then the board of directors elects the executive board, as it stands.
Okay, you have fifteen seconds on, if you'd like them. Okay. Michael, Turnigan Arm.
I have no comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. And Stephen, University.
I don't really have anything to add, and I concur with the, uh, what was said by Roger and Jason and, uh, I think John wrote, once again, part of the point, um, perhaps the board director, not the board of directors, but the executive board to be elected by the delegate. Or not have board directors, but so... That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, a truck of one.
I mean, very important things happening right now. Okay. The topics that we did not get to this evening that I would invite a second meeting for, but that's totally your decision, meeting notice, standards of conduct, fiscal year, insurance requirements, committees, and anything else on your mind. Uh, I will leave that to your fearless leaders to determine the date and time of that meeting, and I hand it back to you. Move to adjourn.
Can I make a motion, and I'm out of line? I'd like to make a motion that once we get through this, that we do not vote for a minimum of sixty days. My CC would like to see this document, and we want to put it out to our public. We want them to be able to respond to it before we come back. So this is gonna slow your time scale down a little bit, but I think it's gonna give broader community input. For example, she was not allowed to talk, and she is a very bright person with good ideas. And I'm sorry that she didn't...
You can't make a motion right now because you're in a work session, so you've gotta go back to the...
The work sessions are not, we can't make a motion in the work session.
Okay.
So, that's something we'll...
Could hold it to the next meeting. Yeah.
Address it.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I move to move out of the work session?
And then we're back in a meeting.
And extend the meeting for ten minutes.
That's up to you.
That's you. Oh, I thought we were gonna adjourn at eight oh two. We're out of time.
It's up to you.
Yeah. Yeah, you need, you need to, you need to make, you need to get out of the work session. Yeah, yeah. And then you're gonna, then you could decide it off in the next minutes.
Okay, so we are adjourning the work session, but...
Then you can have a motion and it can pass without.
Okay. We're stopping the work session?
Right now.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Can I interrupt?
I, I would like us to recess this work session.
Thank you.
Meeting is open for us to continue should we decide to do that and how we would do that. So that we can just have a continuum of what you're doing, as opposed to stopping and starting over. I mean, now, yeah. That's what I'm asking.
Recession. What do we do here?
You have a second? Second. I am seconding that we recess this work session. That's correct. Does that also mean the meeting's over?
No.
Okay. Then, yes.
Not debatable, amendable, resumé.
Uh... Majority vote.
Point of determination.
Consensus vote?
Oh, yeah, you have to get a...
That is the body just till the next meeting.
That's right. It's the body's decision. That's why I did put it out there.
Take a vote.
Okay, so it's a, just a consensus vote, or is it...
It's a majority rule.
It's a majority rule, so we do have to give a time to it. You can't just say recess. You have to give a time.
Okay. So what would the time be?
In a month?
I mean, we could say like thirty days would give a, you know, within thirty days or something.
Not to, not to exceed thirty days?
Not exceed thirty days, and then it could be the next November meeting, or if you guys wanted to do another special meeting, the body can make that decision.
Correct.
Okay.
How do you move that?
State what it is we're doing.
Uh, this is a motion to recess the work session, uh, to not, that recess would not exceed thirty days.
And...
Uh, do we have a second?
It was me.
It was you.
I'll second it.
Okay, great. So now we just vote, there's no debate? Uh, can we do...
Sure.
Can we move aside?
Any objections, you can call.
Any objections? That's ruled, it's ruled.
Okay.
May I ask for a point of information? The list that we're going to be talking about, that go out to everybody so that we're well prepared.
Yes, thank you. And it could go out to the point with notation about where in the bylaws those are.
Correct.
Those items, yes. And thank you for that. And now you can adjourn, or you could adjourn, or you could call for a motion to adjourn, or you could go into a work session and take that, or take, go into a board meeting and take that motion, do whatever you want. Move to adjourn?
Consensus.
Yeah.
Volunterer?
Hi. Hi.